Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council Meeting of October 5th, 2022. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weir. Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you, and welcome to all of you. We have some students from Bakersfield College, from Professor Holt's class. Welcome to all of you, any from CSUB. It's always good to have you here. We had the pleasure tonight of having Pastor Donna Putnam from The Garden offer the invocation. Pastor Donna leads the ministries there. She does many trips with people from Bakersfield to African nations, recently coming back from Uganda. Thank you for your service there. Following the invocation, Sarah Purcell, who's a junior at Bakersfield Christian High School, will lead us in the pledge. She's the Ward III Alternate Youth Commissioner. She's in the Honors Academy and quite a farmer, a business owner, caring for 700 chickens, preparing the eggs for sale, and you do a lot of farmers markets and pop-ups. So, thank you so much both for being here. Please stand.
Thank you, Council and Mayor Go, for the opportunity to give the invocation. Briefly, I just want to say I'm a fifth-generation Bakersfield family. My great-grandfather and his father prior to that established sandstone brick. And I remember many times when I was a younger woman, a young girl, excuse me, hearing the stories of how they immigrated to Bakersfield because of the rich fertile valley that we host, as well as the entrepreneurial opportunities. So, I'm praying today, carrying the dreams of my forefathers. I'm praying today, having the involvement of families today, hearing their concerns for crime, for safety, needs for safety, and I'm praying today for their concerns for their next generation. So, let us pray. Father, I thank you for the council. I thank you for Mayor Go and all the members. I thank you, Father, for the decisions that they are making today and in the future. I pray, Heavenly Father, that you would grant them great peace and great understanding, and the strength of resolve to not only look at the issues today, but to foresee issues and concerns for tomorrow, and help to prepare that way. Father, may your wisdom guide them, may your strength sustain them, and may the peace of God envelop them. In Jesus' name, amen.
God bless you.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Donna, and thank you Commissioner Purcell. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. For safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chambers or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance, that conduct that disrupts the meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, going off-topic, shouting, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, would you please read the next item?
Public statements.
Thank you. In keeping with council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda, and for items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on tonight's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. If you're here on consent calendar, hearing items 8A or B, now is not the time to speak, you'll be given an opportunity to speak when that item, those items, are called later in the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues, however, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council cannot take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on tonight's speaker's agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received one speaker card for items listed on tonight's agenda. The first speaker is Edward S. Robinson regarding item 7P.
Welcome, and please introduce yourself.
Hey, everyone. I'm Edward Robinson. I'm a resident of Ward 5 and an Army Infantry veteran. I discovered that Councilman Bruce Freeman was president of Castle &amp; Cook's Mainland Community Division for over 21 years, retiring in 2014. I understand that during his tenure with the agency, he led the development of over five square miles of southwest Bakersfield. Since this agenda item will impact Ward 5, and is also the company from which Councilman Freeman retired, I wanted to know if there was a discussion by council to consider the potential of any conflicts of interest. Thank you.
Edward, which item was it?
Item 7B.
7, not 8?
Yes, on the consent calendar agenda, items 7P.
Okay. Well, that's 8B. He's talking about 7B. Well, I was planning on recusing myself from 8B, but I'm happy to recuse myself on 7B.
7 Papa P.
7, I'm sorry. 7B?
P, as in Papa.
P.
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Because there is a... Actually, I don't think there's any confluence of interest on them approving a track map, but out of an abundance of caution, I'll recuse myself from both 7P and 8B.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers for the items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received two speaker cards for items not listed on tonight's agenda. The first speaker is Michael Turnipseed, followed by O.C. Crawford.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Michael Turnipseed. I represent the Kern County Taxpayers Association. I'll call this Chapter 2 of our Questions About the Measure-End Report issued two weeks ago. City taxpayers are not just residents and businesses, they are your customers. Customer satisfaction must be your council's top priority. Two weeks ago, your council received a report that described the first three years of Measure- End's $280 million of council-approved expenditures. Are you satisfied with the, A, the quality of the report, and the benefits that have actually occurred with this $280 million of expenditure over the last three years? If you think, and if compare that not to the council goals, but to the actual 13 goals that were required under the Measure-End approval system. If you think the report is lacking in substance, what are you, as council members, going to do about this disturbing report? To Kern Tax, it's painfully remindful to us of the city's Amazon H2Q application. Do you, as council members, believe that $280 million was well-spent? How has it improved the quality of life of the average citizen in Bakersfield? Was it equitable? Was it beneficial to everybody in the community in an equal way? The city of Pittsburgh, decades ago, when they started their process to renew the city, had a motto: "If it's not good for everyone, it's not good for anyone."
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Next speaker, please.
O.C. Crawford.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mayor, and all. My name is O.C. Crawford. I'm with the True Love Tribe, and I would like to give a brief report of our fifth awards banquet. I want to say right off the bat, before I forget, we really miss our mayor. She has been to all, to the four previous banquets, and we really missed her this time. But she was doing something, or receiving something, that she well-deserves some award up in the San Francisco area. But anyway, we, the True Love Tribe wants to make Bakersfield and Kern County the best, in the state, the best in America, or at least the best it can be. So, when we find people who are doing outstanding work, we want to recognize them, build them up, and encourage them. And it just so happens that three of the city council members here was part of that, were the recipients of some of those rewards. And these are coming from the various, almost all of the congressional offices, the, what's his name, anyway, from the congress level, I mean, the federal level, state level, county level, they received awards for their outstanding work. So, just so that the audience would know, I'm not just blowing smoke, can you just hold it up? These are the certificates from the various governmental departments. This happens to be for Andre Gonzalez, who did attend, but he had to leave early, but somehow, one was left behind. They forgot to give him one. He got several. So, we just want to report that we are doing something. We believe in Bakersfield and Kern County. We have some of the best people, and I feel that we are going forward, and we're going to be leaders in various ways. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford, and thank you for your family's generosity in supporting these efforts, and I know that you have personally contributed to this. Thank you very much.
It is really our honor and pleasure.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Tina Ferguson.
How are you, everyone? Some are familiar with me, some are not, but here I am again, Tina Binkston, with issues regarding the southeast. Earlier this year, they had a name change of the Cottonwood Road. I guess maybe it's the third or fourth name change it's had over time, to, I really don't know what it is. It's, some areas, they have the signage marked MLK Junior Boulevard, some are marked South MLK Junior Boulevard, some are marked South Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. So, my problem is that I've had several medical problems that came up, and they had to have medical paperwork that could not be transmitted electronically, so I had to receive snail mail. And that mail was returned twice, and it slowed my procedure for surgery down for a month and a half, because they said they could not locate the street. Okay, so I went on the GIS Interactive Mapping, and the city actually has the street name from Greenwich Green South all the way to Casa Loma has been changed, but from, I live further out. I live near the, close to White Lane, and the map, the city map, still has this Cottonwood Road. So, my question is, how far does the name change extension go? How long does it take for the street signs to be posted? And how come the inconsistency in the signage? Because if you exit the Highway 58, either going west, exiting east or west, it says MLK. So, when you exit off the freeway, if you're not familiar, you live here locally, so, and some people aren't map savvy, and they don't know north, south, east, and west. Unfortunately, as adults, they still don't know. So, if they don't know that, and they get off the expressway either way on 58, there's no designation, it just says MLK. So, I think that that signage should represent, okay, we have two separate ways. There's the South Dr. Martin Luther, or whatever you guys can, I have no idea what the true name is, because the signs that the city has posted has three different variations of that, that name change. So, I need it to be clarified. The only street that has South Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard on it is the one at Casa Loma.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Tina, for your advocacy on this issue. I know we want to make it right. There are certainly some challenges to making this particular thing work out, given that there's some jurisdiction along MLK Boulevard that is in the right-of-way of Caltrans, but then also the county, as well as the city. So, Greg, if you could reach out to Tina, and let's have some conversations with the appropriate authorities to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
Mayor Go, that was our final speaker.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent calendar items 7A to 7Y for approval.
Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Does any council member wish to recuse themselves from an item?
7P? 7P. Your mic.
7P on the consent calendar.
Thank you. And does any council member wish to remove an item for a separate consideration? Seeing none, I make a motion that we approve consent calendar items 7A through 7Y.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Mayor, if we could just have the record reflect, that Councilmember Freeman recused himself on 7P due to the appearance of impropriety, and his vote shall be cast as a, I'm guessing, a yes on all other items except 7P.
Motion is approved, with Vice-
Do you need me to say that? I was going to say it after we did it.
Motion is approved, with Vice Mayor Weir absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent calendar, public hearings, items 8A and B. A staff memorandum has been received, removing item 8A from tonight's agenda. In addition, a public comment speaker card was received for item 8B.
Thank you. So, at this time, we're going to consider 8B. Our item is public hearings. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers per side, so it's important that you identify yourself, make your statements succinctly, so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to the staff's recommendation first, then we'll hear from those who'd like to speak in favor of staff's recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the TV screens behind me, which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself. After 14 minutes, after 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash, indicating your time is up. Quickly end your statement. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk, and she'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing item.
Public hearing to consider a resolution for specific plan amendment number 22-0086, approving an amendment to the West Bing specific plan circulation element, land use element, zoning element, and park and open space element on approximately 44.93 acres, generally located west of the intersection of South Allen Avenue and White Lane, applicant and property owner, Bolt House Properties LLC.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Mr. Clegg, do we have any comments from staff?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Our Development Services Director, Chris Boyle, will provide a brief summary on this item, as it was on the consent public hearing. We don't have a presentation, but can provide some context for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Madam Mayor, Commissioners. Item 8B tonight is a request for adoption of a resolution for amendments to the West Bing specific plan. The West Bing specific plan has been a part of the city's zoning fabric since 2007, and from time to time, it has been amended. Although there are four elements of the specific plan that are under consideration tonight, really, the main element that's being looked at tonight is the circulation element, because largely, the changes to the other elements are byproducts of the circulation element. West Bing, the West Bing applicants have desired to engage in more place-making in the central core of the specific plan, and so consequently, there are proposals for elements such as narrower streets, and shorter blocks, canopy street trees, roundabouts, neck downs, chokers, and other traffic calming measures that ultimately deliver a different type of vision for the West Bing arterial, which currently is the White Lane right-of-way. In separating the arterial into a couplet with a park in between, it goes far in providing a unique sense of place that helps to define the central core of West Bing and deliver upon their vision of a quality neighborhood on our western fringe. With that said, staff would, staff and the Planning Commission recommend adoption of the resolution to the West Bing specific plan as presented. That completes my presentation. I'd be happy to receive questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. At this time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Go ahead and come forward. Please introduce yourself.
Hey, everyone. I'm Edward Robinson. I'm a resident of Ward 5 and an Army Infantry veteran. It looks like on the agenda, this matter is presented, or was presented, by Ward 5, and I'd like to preface my comments on public hearing agenda item number 8B by saying that I believe that representation matters. I would like to ask council, the city manager and/or city attorney, if there is a code of conduct or attendance policy which addresses absences of city council members. If so, how is it handled if a city council member exceeds the allotted amount of absences? The reason for my questions are because I'm concerned that the interests of Ward 5 residents aren't being adequately represented by Councilmember Bruce Freeman. The reason why is because I've discovered, after reviewing the meeting minutes of the city council meetings from January 5th to date, that he has missed 16 of 30 meetings, 31, including the day he made today. However, how is Council Freeman able to represent the interests of Ward 5 residents if he has missed more than 50% of the meetings this year so far? His representation could arguably mean that an outcome will build Ward 5. However, since he's been absent, how do we know that approving item 8B, which is a resolution for a specific plan amendment number 22-0086, which would impact Ward 5, is in our best interests? I would also like to ask if council has considered creating a board, committee, or department role that is focused on diversity and inclusion to ensure that citizens of Bakersfield are always representative? Moreover, has city council defined the circumstances under which special election can be held? If so, I'd be honored to represent the citizens of greater Bakersfield or Ward 5. Please consider the questions I've posed today, and the potential negative impact which approving public hearing items number 8B may have on Ward 5 without someone to represent Ward 5. Representation matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor, in support, of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. We see that Councilmember Freeman has recused himself. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on the council? Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I think West Ming is a great project, and I appreciate all the work that Bolt House does out there, and Castle &amp; Cook, and I would move to approve, since that used to be my ward, a lot of it, and I am adjacent. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Don't see any other requests to speak. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Weir absent, and Councilmember Freeman abstaining.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and mayor's statements.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize for any error on my part.
No, no, no. I think we just have some delay over here.
Okay, thank you so much. Colleagues, every day, we hear about the issues of crime in our community, and the rise in homelessness. Every day for the last, frankly, last five years or so, perhaps even more, we've heard about these issues. I, myself, have been a victim of property crime, having my car broken into, having my office broken into. So, it is not lost on me, and I don't think it's lost on any of us on this dais, that we have real issues related to a rise in property crime, and also issues related to homelessness, which are two distinct and separate issues. In my conversations and work with the city manager's office, and others, and throughout City Hall, I know full well that it is not lost on anyone at City Hall. These issues are of great importance and significance in our community. You know, if there was an easy solution, we would have done it already. We would have pursued it, and we would have tackled it. None of us like these issues. None of us are happy that crime is increasing. None of us are happy that so many people are unhoused on our streets. And many of us on this dais, and many of us within City Hall, city staff, have been working every single day to try to find practical, real solutions to solve these problems. And it's been a challenge, but we've taken some steps forward that I think are working, but obviously, there's still much more work to do. Every day, we work on issues and find new ways to respond. We work on, working on individual responses. The mayor and I, I think, are on daily texts from constituents in Ward 2, and she's great at responding to individual constituents who have issues day in and day out. Many of us, Councilmember Parlier, Councilmember Arias, Councilmember Smith, others, have worked very hard at researching possible solutions from other cities, and offering those by way of referrals. We made referrals regarding possible ordinances, and looking at new ways in which we can tackle these issues. So, we are working, and we continue to work over the years, to resolve many of the issues facing our, our community, the quality of life issues in our community. So, I really want us to focus in, as we move forward- So I really want us to focus in, as we move forward towards the end of this year, to really move towards some substantive policy decisions for this council. And I want to make a few referrals tonight, as city manager and staff prepare a report on some of the possible solutions to additional concerns related to homelessness and property crime, that they really pinpoint some of the specific areas in which we have been working to address these issues for quite some time. Number one, Care Court. We know that Care Court has passed a legislature assigned by the governor. Can staff please include an update on my referral to work with both the state and the county to accelerate the implementation of Care Court in Kern County? And I understand that we've also been working with our lobbyists to identify areas in which we can actually implement Care Court much more quickly. So can we please bring that back to the full council, so we, as a full council, can understand what our options are moving forward? Number two, we understand that when it relates to homelessness, there are many subpopulations of people who are experiencing homelessness in our community. There are people, for example, who cannot perform their basic ADLs. Those are activities of daily living, and for whom a congregate living facility such as the Brunnish Lane Navigation Center is not appropriate. They can't bathe themselves, they can't perform their basic functions, and so we have to identify specific housing options for these individuals who are on our streets as well. But there are other subpopulations of people for which we need to find a solution. So there again, staff has been working diligently, and Anthony Valdez is here in the room, has been working and leading the work out with the Kern Homeless Collaborative. I'd like staff to bring back a report on a specific, very specific outline of those subpopulations of individuals who are unhoused, and the strategies in which that we're pursuing in order to get them housed. Number three, Councilmember Parlier has been a huge advocate for the Homeward Bound Program. We know that many folks out on our streets are not originally from Bakersfield, and in fact, want to be reunited with family and friends and loved ones in other parts of the country. So Councilmember Parlier has asked for a program to be implemented within the cities so that we can appropriately reunite people, unhoused individuals from Bakers, or in Bakersfield. So I'd like to know, what is the update on the implementation of Councilmember Parlier's referral related to the Homeward Bound Program? And then finally, the local criminal justice system, we know, has a few gaps, and we've had these conversations before at this dais, and individually with the city manager's office, but I'd like us to bring that back as well as part of that report. It'd be really helpful to see in the report the full scope of work staff has been doing to respond to some of those gaps in the criminal justice system locally in Kern County, so that we can better address the needs of residents in Bakersfield. We're doing great work. Our police department's doing a tremendous job. We're doing, we're making great gains at recruiting additional police officers and training them up and getting them on our streets. We're making progress, but we need to work with our county partners and other partners in order for us to really strengthen that system. And so I'd like staff to provide a report also related to the criminal justice system. So with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Anyone else? Seeing none, the meeting stands adjourned at 5:51. Students from B.C., renegades, we are B.C., thank you for being here. This is a very short meeting relative to what we typically do, but we're glad to have you here. 5:51.